More appointments they need to get through this morning, so I figured it'd be best just to kind of give them a break, to talk to everybody and then ease on out. So let's continue on with the meeting. You have in front of you the consent agenda. The minutes were mailed to you, the minutes for November the 13th and December the 3rd were emailed for our regular meeting, and then you also have the county's payroll for December the 24th. I'd like to entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda.
Make motion to approve.
I second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda approved. Nothing under old business at this time, and a new business, we have to consider approval for the 2025 budget amendment to CATS. If y'all remember when I worked shop, that was something we had to do because we had actually agreed to purchase a vehicle for CATS. Timmy explained that, so at this time, Mr. Timmy coming back?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we, I asked for approval for a van as an admin and a backup for CATS. It was approved, but neglected to ask for a 25 budget to be amended to pay for the vehicle. Since I had bought the vans at the beginning of this budget, I did not foresee purchasing a vehicle, but state has put on the BOGO sale and we could not pass up the deal. So I'm asking that we amend CATS 25 budget to pay for the van.
As we're saying, like I said, it was a budget item that we just had to do an amendment to the budget. I'd ask for a motion at this time to approve the amendments of the budget.
I make a motion to approve the amendment.
I second.
And a second, at this time call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then consider approval for the 2026 budget for CATS.
Yes.
We have had that in an email, I think that you had emailed out to everybody, so at this time I'll just ask for a, if any questions, I think everybody had time to talk to Timmy, if you had any questions about it, ask for a motion to approve the budget for the 2026 CATS.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timmy.
One more thing. I wanted to ask for, at this time we have seven bus and the van will make one extra vehicle, so that'll give us eight that are all handicap accessibility. I, at this time, have four full-time drivers, one full-time dispatch, and one person that is a fill-in dispatch and driver. I have a part-time position, I don't have full at this time, I have not filled it yet, but I would like to go ahead and look in the future and request to have two positions added, one full-time for a driver, one part-time for a driver, so that as time goes, as I figure out the new schedule, the new times that we're going to try to expand into, I can fill those positions without having to come back and ask. If I could get those two positions approved.
So we'd actually amend the, need to actually amend the
Manning chart and workforce classification.
The Manning chart and workforce classification for CATS at this time, for her to approve a full-time and a part-time position that will be covered with your funding from the
I don't look to fill those at this time, I'm just trying to look ahead.
So you just want us to just kind of consider?
I just want to, that's right. And just so that whenever I do get ready, the positions are there and I can go ahead and make arrangements for what I need to do without coming back and having to stall time.
So basically you just need, we need a motion to change the Manning chart for CATS for a full-time and part-time position.
Adding one of each. Adding, adding one of each.
And add one of each. So at this time I entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Robbie.
Second.
Second from this side of the room. Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timmy, for all CATS does.
Okay, now kind of cut me off. All right, going to, a new business to item D, is consider a board appointment for the E9111 Board. That is on page 30. I know every one of us have received a list of very, very qualified applicants for this position. It is very vital for, for the 911 Board, because these take care of basically like we do for the commissioners, the day-to-day, Frank takes care of the day-to-day operation, but the business side of the I E9111 Board. At this time I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion where you appoint Ms. Tabitha Cross.
Okay, I have, at this time I have a motion from Mr. McGahay to appoint Tabitha Cross. Do I have a second on that? Due to no second, that motion won't go no further. Does anybody else want to suggest or make a recommendation or motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do, but before I do, I do want to repeat what you've already said. We have absolutely some of the best applicants, I think, this time that we've seen in a long time, and it's really a tough decision to have to go through them and know we've got so many good qualified folks, but after talking to some around and about, I'd like to put in for Mr. Jamie Wismer.
Okay. I have a formal motion over here from Ms. Holmes to nominate Jamie Wismer.
I'll second Jamie. I've been knowing Jamie a long time and I think he's a man who's been taking me and he's got fully capable of being on there with all his experience, so I'll second Jamie Wismer.
I've known Jamie for 30 years and yeah, he is an upstanding person, human being, friend, and support him 100%. With all that being said, at some point I wish we would look at having a woman on the E9111 Board also.
Say it again.
That being said, I have a motion for, and a second, for Mr. Jamie Wismer to be appointed to the County E9111 Board. This time I'd like to call back to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? So Jamie Wismer here, will you notify?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number, letter E, I'm sorry, consider, consider board appointment for Southeast Alabama Rural Planning Organization Policy Committee. That is a mouthful. That is something that Mr. Tommy McGahay has been serving on for several years now. I would make a recommendation that if nobody else would like to have that position, if y'all don't have any other suggestion, I would entertain a motion for maybe
I would make a motion that Mr. Tommy McGahay would consider staying on that board.
Thank you.
I second.
Have a motion in a second?
Three seconds.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Tommy. Item L, this is something that we did not actually get on the workshop and I'm going to take blame for that, but it's something that is very useful, that we use a lot on our drug and alcohol testing. Okay, this is something Susan Carper does for, I'm sorry, Susan Harris does for us, I'm sorry, I've been doing that for years. Miss Susan Harris does for us on that. Kyle, now I think, Kyle, you did help with this some also, because I know it kind of is over there with her, and it is just to renew the contract with, is it the name of that?
It's On Track Drug and Alcohol Testing.
On Track, okay. On Track Drug and Alcohol Testing. I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
Make a motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, all right. G, consider agreement with the State of Alabama for National Voting Rights Act Confirmation mailing process. This is something we discussed at the last, at the workshop, something they do every four years, if I'm right, Karen, where they just send out to kind of purge the mailers later.
That's correct.
It's just an agreement we enter into where they can be able to mail that out. I'd entertain a motion to end this agreement with them.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Go down to H, this is consider approval of the contract for the County Attorney. Ms. Morgan Erickson's been serving as the county attorney for a little over a year now. It was on the first contract for a year basis, she has mailed out everything. This is actually kind of for a two-year basis. I would actually entertain a motion to consider reappoint Ms. Morgan Erickson. She does a very good job, I think, for us. She's very, very diligent in her work and very thorough, and any time you need her, you can call her. She will be ready to answer your questions or get you an answer for it.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second? Go to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry, Ms. Morgan, you have now been sentenced to
sentenced to again.
To a two-year.
Four years.
To a two-year deal.
Two years.
Consider approval for the Sheriff Department to purchase a vehicle. This is the one that Blake talked to us about where a cow, right before, was it Thanksgiving or Christmas, Blake kind of got out in front of you?
Thanksgiving.
It totaled his vehicle, he has went and got estimates on a truck for us. The only thing that we had to consider is that there was about a $7,000
$7,338.
$38, yeah, $7,338 difference of what the insurance company would pay to what the new vehicle would cost. I think we can pay that out of general fund to take care of that, and I would make a recommendation or entertain a motion to go ahead and repurchase this vehicle.
I have a question, just of general interest. Was this truck I really fully equipped? Was it one of the ones that had been already over to?
Actually, no, the truck, the truck that I wrecked, it was fully equipped, but it was one that I equipped it.
It wasn't one of the new ones?
It wasn't one of the new ones.
Okay, so the two new ones, I was just looking at the, that cost has really gone up to equip vehicles?
And what I generally do on, whenever I replace my vehicle that I drive, I put the lights and all in, so.
All right.
Just try to keep
I was just thinking, and I know you'd spoken about that at workshop, but I was just wondering if, you know, how much we could salvage if we could.
I've got everything all covered.
Because of the cost involved, over $10,000 to equip the truck, that's a lot of money.
The one that, the replacement, I'll equip it, but I'm going to lose a lot of repurpose stuff.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, let's see. Lynn, I'm going to actually ask you to come up, because we've got about three or four items right here in a row that, that we may have a couple of questions on, I know we kind of went over that at the workshop, but just in case, the first thing is the declaration of surplus for the Engineers Department?
We have two items I want to try to surplus, and we discussed these at the workshop, and it wanted to see a little small 12 by 30 office building we got next to our office there now. I'd like to surplus it, if I can get approval for that. And again, I'd dispose of it, whatever needs or means I see necessary, whether it be on GOV deals or maybe even do a local bid, so people with local, they've just shown local interest in that, in that trailer. We can have an open bid, try it that way, if it does really meet the, what we feel we can maybe reject those and maybe go to a GOV deal bid, to have a little more exposure. So, but I'll be glad to entertain whatever y'all want to do on that, so.
You want to do them separately or just get it all at one time?
I can, I don't know if y'all want to do them separate approval, and the second one is a 2006 East is the model. It's a aluminum triaxle, treadle we've had obviously for a long time, and we're kind of limited because it's aluminum, we cannot really haul riprap or anything like that with it, so I want to get more of a multi-use treadle when we go to Birmingham and get rock, especially many bridges we had to build right now, we could be utilizing that, and right now we can't really use it.
So Lynn has proposed to dispose of, at his discretion, whether it's GOV deals, bid it out, whatever, the small utility buildings that sit adjacent their shop and the utility trailer, the aluminum utility trailer. I would entertain a motion for Lynn to dispose of these supplies at the Engineers Department's discretion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Lynn, the next thing on there is consider purchase of equipment for the Engineers Department.
We, we have this one, Karen and I discussed this earlier this morning, I think back in March of last year, trucks are really hard to get, especially dump trucks are hard to get ordered, so you've got to kind of go ahead and get your name out there to go and reserve some, and I think we already got approval, and this is an approved budget item for this fiscal year already, but it's a tractor rig, it's a newer Kenworth with a Cummins engine, and I just request we get it, it's actually a bit below what the actual new bid, the vendor's given it to us at last year's price. So it's $221,500 is the purchase, 221.5?
221.5.
Yeah, is the purchase price of this tractor rig.
And this was a budget item?
Yes. And it was approved as a purchase last, at last year's, at last year's.
But this is going to be a newer truck, for actually a little bit less money?
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion for the Engineers Department to go ahead with the purchase of this truck.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, what else you got, Lynn? Anything else on that?
I think that's really it for its purchase of equipment. We're going, as money comes about, we're going to be coming to you back for some more, we've got a lot of, a lot of equipment to buy this year.
Okay.
So the next one, I think on list is the actual shop building, our new building we have here on the shop, and we discussed the cost for this, I think the total cost, if we did everything that we requested with all the additions, we had an all base, a base bid and had an alternate bid for the additional items, but if we did all the items, alternate items, it'd come up to about $339,812.
So they actually had it broken down for you in like four different scenarios?
Yes, the base bid was just the 80 by 150 pole barn, basically, but it's a red iron building, and it was $184,000 for the erection and placement of that building.
And then if you want, if they wanted to do the 50 by 80 with walls was another $46,000, a 50 by 80 with concrete is another $8,912, and then the insulation is $28,900. So you've got different options commissioners on what y'all would like to do or how you would want to do it. Entertain a motion for anything that y'all would like to propose.
I'd just like to note that, like I said, we discussed, I mean, we have three, three vehicles that are pretty much, need to be climate controlled in that building to store that, so I just request we can get that. Like I said, it takes a lot of shop space, it gets pulled out every day.
And, and I know one of the pieces of equipment we were discussing is this paint truck that we just spent like
Paint truck, herbicide.
$300,000 on last year, which I think would be beneficial honestly.
It's a $405,000 purchase we made, yes, so I'd like to keep that thing.
Try to keep it as, as good as we can. Like I said, it's in the shop, but if I had to pull it out and they got another vehicle in there, they can't get back out of the shop that day, and the temperature drops, blow freezes, and then we got our paint truck setting out in the weather.
Tell me again the, the actual size?
80 by 150.
That's what I thought, then I thought you said something different, that's why I asked. You know, having build a building in the last three years that's comparable to this, this is not a bad price. I know it sounds like a lot of money, but it's truthfully not, not for what we're looking at. Now can we afford it? I don't know that.
When you said you were going to defer some equipment, it's like you were on the third purchase of some equipment.
We're going, we had budgets of a bulldozer this year, and it's like a $300,000 item, we're going to take that off. We're going to take that item off, yeah.
I'd say we do it all right now, just get it over with.
I do, I hate to see you put it off, that's like the size, if you need the, the room or the size, then let's do it.
When you said it was like 50 something dollars a square foot or?
56, I believe, if you did every item, it was like $54.
54 or 29 per square foot.
Yeah, 54, 29 per square foot, yeah.
So I would
And I second.
Have a motion in a second to have the building that Lynn just discussed purchased and built. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Me and Karen had a discussion, I think it would be wise for us to use our capital improvement funds to do this.
So you're not going to need the money, not going to need it?
I think for this part it meets the requirements for the capital improvement fund, and I think that would be the best use.
Okay.
And also, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sure everyone knows, but so everyone else knows, tell us the location of this building, because I think
It'll go directly behind the, kind of back here to the back left, here behind the commission facility right here, so.
I would also entertain a motion for us to use the capital improvement funds to do this.
I make the motion.
Have a motion?
I second.
Second. All in favor on that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Rob.
All right, and just an update, also, we get, we have our, we have several items with our rebuilds to stay in compliance with the rebuild as far as, like I said, real accounting, but there's, there's procedures we have to do every year, and we just submitted a letter to the rebuild Alabama stating that there was 90, of all our projects we did this year, we have to do a minimum 50% of the work has to be completed by a contractor, and we did 93% was completed by a contractor. We had about 7% in-kind services. Most of this was all resurfacing jobs or materials that went toward resurfacing jobs, and we basically did all the grassing, mulching and things like that, so those incidentals that we did, but it was 93% was the amount that was contracted out, and like I said, our minimum is 50, so we more than met that goal, and it's just a letter we have to submit to them, we've already got it submitted to the, to the state, I was going to give y'all just a heads up on that, so.
Where are we at on E B Creek Bridge?
We've demoed, all the bridge is basically out now. We will be there today, working on it, but we're actually meeting with the Forest Service today on George Lundie and the other, the other three bridges on the clearing limits of those, those projects. We have to kind of get that already in line as well, and those guys are doing that today right now, so. But we had a real busy year, I don't think people realize exactly what we do, but just kind of, I know I missed some, but after discussing yesterday, I kind of wanted to kind of give an update about what we actually did this past year and some of our projects. We did our, our 107 project was completed, we did a lot of the groundwork for Connect Sausage, did a lot of the earth movement out there to get that building up and going to get them open on their deadline they've got set. We did the Cross Murray Road, Hamner, this is new paving, Hamner, Bridge Creek, Hub Road, Pine Forest, we did the LBW Walking Trail, we did Brogdon Road, Christie Lane, and some of our resurfacing projects we also did, we did Dice Dairy, Ard Creek Road, Bogan Level, Knolls Road, Hidden Forest Lane up there, there in District 2, and also the Glenn Chambers Road. So we were, actually you look at a year, that's a lot, especially a lot of manpower went toward those, especially the paving, the new paving.
Tobacco Road also.
Yeah, and tobacco, I forgot about Tobacco Road. So yeah, we had a real busy year, but hoping to get more caught up, we discussed this with some of the commissioners yesterday, and a bit about our work orders, hopefully within four to six weeks we'll have all those knocked out, with the exception of our bridges, and y'all have those, and that's one, the handout I give, just giving you, where everything in red is by priority, that is, that needs attention immediately, and it's not really any, it's just, it just needs to be addressed, and basically everybody had at least three, I think, two District 2, the only one didn't have it, they had two, and every other district had three, both the bridges in their, their district. It's just a little bit, we got some loss, some section loss and some piling, and we'll just get those cleaned up and repaired and get those encased, so, but I know y'all request what, what districts and that's what y'all have, that's what y'all have.
Even still, I mean, I can see how many is in District 4, but I don't have a clue where they are without going and looking up.
Yes.
Somewhere like, sitting right here, I don't know where it is.
And I have a structure map, it's just detail when you start looking at, you know, I could, I could give a road name or whatever, or a creek, and a lot of times it's over that, but that's, that's, that's the list.
If there's any way to pack that in there, man, that'd be great. County road number would be better than nothing.
The three in District 3 that's listed here are the other ones that are being done now, are they in addition to these three?
They'll, they'll all be done, yes ma'am, we're fixing to start getting in the spring, and again, we got, I'll, I'll be purchasing, which is a, it's approved budget item, a mini excavator to get onto these bridges and be able to dig around these and get encasements put around those, and that'll, that'll come a little bit later.
But this is work something that the county can do itself.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and then
One other thing, Lynn, about your Manning chart, I know you had mentioned
Yes, Manning chart, yeah, I'm sorry, I had that down on my list right here. We discussed, yeah, I think yesterday, I met with all, all you commissioners yesterday, we had Engineer Assistant 1, we have an RBS, which is a Road and Bridge Superintendent, a labor, I got three labor positions open, I got a VO3 and a VO4, and I got three shop mechanics open, and as I discussed with all you yesterday, I like to move some of this stuff around, I like to probably like to actually get rid of maybe one of my labor positions and put that labor position in the Road and Bridge Superintendent, and then actually break that job, those, those, those two into, into two, like maybe a Road and Bridge Foreman position. I may have one for a maintenance, a maintenance position to handle all these, all this bridge item, there's, it warrants, there's, we have, we're the second largest inventory in the state as far as bridges, so this definitely warrants a bridge maintenance foreman to take care of all these items. There's always work to be done on the, on these bridges. And the second would be a, and as you know, we've got a sky trim in our rideaway clear, and I like to actually promote a, because I think some of y'all saw when my foreman's actually flagging traffic the other day on a, for that sky trim. So I like to kind of take the remainder of these things and actually create a, a rideaway crew of this instead of dissolving one of our other, other crews, and this will free up others to kind of handle, maybe doing more work orders north and south, maybe I got two other crews. We have four basically Road and Bridge Foremans right now that handle pipe replacement, washes and all that kind of items, but I'm thinking more now, as more I get into SIMs, I'd rather give each foreman, not make them a specialty, but I have one that actually does nothing but driveway installations, pipe installations, and another one doing mostly
And that's replacing, not actual new installation.
Right, yeah, yeah, or yeah, just working, doing pipe maintenance and things of that nature, and the other one doing any dirt hauling or whatever, any washes and stuff we may have, have that other crew doing that, and then maybe let the other two handle more items that you, y'all may come up with in between our, our work, work that we have already lined up. So if there's anything that needs to be done, those other two crews can maybe float and take care of those items for you guys, so, but, but that's kind of what I like to see done, I didn't really, we didn't really go over a true final Manning change, because I wanted to talk to y'all.
If you would, would you get that for the next workshop, that way you can have it broken out exactly what you want?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Lynn.
And I know Ron discussed, I mean, he discussed last week at the thing, but some of the public would like to know, we actually had a, we did, I think, 16 miles last month on, on paint striping, 18 bridge inspections, this just for December. We'd had a little bit of grading, but I don't have, we don't have, but anyway, we did some grading, it's a little wet, and sign, we placed about 48 regulatory signs. Theft is still an issue, we had a problem last month, and I'd like to, how we can curb this, but it is definitely a problem, signs are being stole every day, and when it comes to first responders, those signs are very important to try to get people where they need to be. So I've discussed with the sheriff yesterday, maybe some penalties for the ones we've caught already, and I'll discuss that with you guys a little bit later on, but we'd really need to start looking at doing something or educating kids, mostly kids, more about the importance of these signs. I don't know if it needs to take place at the, at the driver's ed level or maiden start when they're third grade, I don't know, to kind of teach them how important these signs are. The only problem, I had a big problem over Christmas, and I know Frank will attest to this, their department called me, I bet you four times over Christmas, I think it was Christmas, and we had a lot of stop signs knocked down. It's one thing still a county road sign, but it's another thing still a regulatory It's one thing still a, a county road sign, um, but it's another thing still a regulatory, um, stop sign or knock it down. That's very, very dangerous. 'Cause we had about ten or twelve, between the state and us, where there was about ten or twelve, uh, signs that are stolen or ran over. And I have video of one of them running over the sign. They came back and actually got it stopped, the, uh, the speed limit sign there about two hours later. They came back and got it. So it's a problem. I just wanted to let y'all be aware of it. I don't know if we need to talk to the school board or what to try to educate these, but it's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
I'll reach out, honestly, I can, I can reach out to the school board and see if there's something, maybe we can go talk with the individual schools if we have to. Say, hey, guys, you know, this is a danger for public safety, but if you get caught and we catch you, there's gonna be a penalty involved. And that'll be something that, that maybe catches their attention, especially if mom and dad starts having to, to pay for some of that.
Yep.
Alright, thank you, Lynn.
Thank y'all.
Um, item M on this. Myself and Karen, and then myself, Karen and Kevin, or Kevin was there that day, and then Kevin also met with another guy to get some quotes to repaint the inside of the courthouse. Um, I figured while we was doing the installation of the handicap round, right now would be a pretty good time to go ahead and do a few more improvements over there. Add it has not been, I guess, repainted completely in, in several years. You have in front of you the quotes. One estimate comes back in, I wanna say I figured it up this morning, that's seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars, and you can see what it all entails. It entails the revenue office, removal of wallpaper in there and painting the office. Then you got it kinda broke down by different stages of what y'all would like to do. Then you have the back stairwell estimate, and then you have the estimate repaint the walls only, and then you have the estimate on that to repaint the, the, um, trim and walls at the courthouse. So each one of these estimates go with the same thing. One was roughly, I think it was seventeen thousand, two hundred, if I'm not mistaken with my math, and I could be. And then the other one was thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. I would definitely love to see some improvements done to that courthouse. When people walk in, it's a very, very beautiful building, but it's, it's nice to walk into something that's very professional, nice, upgraded. And I think it, it'd help our staff over there some too, just, just the appearance of it. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve, I guess, the easiest way to say it, the lowest...
Hello bids.
Bid.
I'll make a motion.
Quote.
I'll make a motion and approve.
I'll second.
In a second. Uh, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, uh... And Lynn, I'm gonna ask for a motion to pay for this out of the general fund.
Make a motion.
Have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed?
We will coordinate around the court system to make sure there's minimal destruction.
And I think this also helps take a lot of pressure off of, of Kevin's crew, 'cause they stay wrapped up with everything else. So this has kinda helped take a lot of pressure off of, off of something we need done and want done to, to help him and his crew out. Um, the next item is executive session. I don't think, unless Mr. Arrington needs to discuss anything, do you need to? 'Cause we had actually talked this...
We talked about it at the work session, so, um, I'm okay to, to remove that from today's agenda.
Okay, so we will move the item in from the executive session. Okay, we got reports from staff. I'm gonna go back, Ms. Brooks, you still sitting here? You've hung out with us all morning, so everything's still good as far as you know when you left.
I was just curious about the painting at the courthouse. I wanted to make sure that happened.
Who's picking out the color?
Um, I, I am not picking out the color. We will let...
No, that'd be a, a group effort.
Yeah, there you go. 'Cause it, you know, if a guy picks it out, everything's gonna be white, okay, or some other color. Um, Kyle?
That's your new gavel?
Good with the EMA and Communications? Eric? Tammy? We have Mr. Frank Schaefer from E-911 sitting here. Frank?
Good morning. Everything's good at the nine-one-one office. We're pushing right along. New Year's come along with some, uh, new visions, some new ideas, and, uh, we're, uh, we're moving right along. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Anything else, Lynn? Sheriff, anything from the commissioners?
No, but I like what Frank just said. Some new ideas and some new vision, and I'd like to encourage all of our department heads to come along with that same idea. And if you've got something you wanna present, talk about, I think we're all here and we're always ready to listen. And that's the way this county needs, needs to move forward.
I think, uh, with this commission, you can call any of us at any given time.
That's right.
I really do.
And you know I like to talk.
Amen.
That's a question.
I would like to welcome Southern Rain Cow Horse Alliance. They started rolling into town last night. They'll be having a big show at the arena, uh, through Sunday.
One thing that, if y'all didn't send your email, if you did not get it, let us know. They actually done an economic impact study. Southern Horse, Southern Rain Cow Horse Alliance. Wow, that's a good one. Um, but they, they actually have went and done an economic impact study of what they bring to the community. They, they do them everywhere they go. It's pretty interesting to see. Um, they do bring a lot of impact to this area for, for their show, you know. People say, well, it's not a big rodeo. It's not. But these people bring a lot of impact to this area. So if you didn't get it, please let us know, and we'll be more than happy to get that back out to y'all. Ms. Aaron?
No, sir.
With nothing else on the agenda, no other comments, I will take a motion to adjourn. Tommy? I say we adjourn. Thank you.